Good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen and Licensing Commissioners meeting for the town of North Andover on Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. And I need to read the governor's announcement. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people who may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So with that, I will call our meeting to order with a roll call vote of attendees, please.
Laura Bates here.
I think we're still missing.
All right, I'll jump in. Mr. Valencourt here.
Oh, sorry, mute again. Rosemary Smedili here.
And Chris Nobley here. We have four of the five select board members here. We have a short agenda night. Our first new business is to confirm our town manager appointment of John Hayland as Director of Information Technology. And I will let Melissa introduce John. We're very excited about John joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very happy to be introducing John to the town for the first time. John has a boucher's degree from the University of Cincinnati in science and design. He spent a decade in the city of Chelsea, starting as the network operations manager, and then serving for five years, or six years, as a director of IT there. He then spent seven years as the Director of Information Technology at Bridwell, where they have over 90 locations. That is a nonprofit. I was lucky enough to be able to check two of John's references. And I know Kathy checked the other two, and they were impeccable. One of his references telling me that he brought their IT department from preschool to graduate school. So I looked forward to working with him and welcoming him on Monday. He was able to start quickly, which we are thrilled about. Obviously, since I'm using Lori's computer right now, we could have used them right now. But we were very excited about him doing.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we've sent John's resume to us all. And John, we welcome you.
Excellent. I'm super excited to be here as well. Thank you.
Well, you've got, I know we chatted just briefly. And as I said, we're just really, we've got so many things kind of on our deck. You know, I hope folks aren't lined up virtually outside of your door too much. I'm sure we will.
Hello?
Rosemary?
Oh, okay. I thought I lost everybody for a moment. Welcome aboard, John.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm the one you cannot see on TV.
I can imagine, though. That's fine.
There we go. That's something great. I'm only kidding.
Hey, John. So this is Dick Valencourt, also member of the select board. I'm an IT guy as well, so welcome. Welcome to any, you know, looking forward to any talks. I'm constantly putting in IT goals in my goals. So we'll be having a lot of conversations, I'm sure.
Excellent. Thank you. It's great. Welcome.
Hi, John. I'm Laura Bates. I'm another member of the select board. Just wanted to welcome you aboard. Looking forward to having you as part of the team, and welcome to North Andover.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. So we just need one little formal piece of business here to make this all official. So I'd love to hear a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen confirm the town manager's appointment of John Hayland as Director of Information Technology for the town of North Andover.
Mr. Chair.
I will second that. Go ahead, Laura. Take it away.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Okay.
Laura Bates, aye. Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. And with a four, zero vote, John, welcome aboard. And we will see you on Monday, virtually, as they say, right?
Sure. Excellent. Thank you.
Best of luck. You're going to have a good staff working for you, and you're going to be working with good people, so.
Oh, I know. I'm looking.
As lucky as we are to have you, you are as equally lucky to be working with the folks you'll be working with.
I would agree 100%. Thank you.
That's great. That's great. All right, we will see you then. So we'll let you get to your evening, John. We have one other item of business on our agenda. And this, Melissa gave us a little heads up on Monday. And this is in regards to the Stevens Estate and the budget for this fiscal year. So Melissa, I'll ask you to kind of reintroduce this for us again for the.
Thank you, Mr. I'm happy to. I did send you all, and I'm sure you received it, a multiple-page memo that maybe was too much information, but I wanted to make sure everyone had all of the details and facts. And that memo is, thanks to Lori, linked to our agenda as well for anyone in the public that wants to read it and follow along. And so as I mentioned to you on Monday, the Finance Director and I met with the Department of Revenue's Division of Local Service Monday afternoon and was brought to attention that this time, the Department of Revenue is unable to certify our tax rate due to the lack of revenues currently collected for the Stevens Estate. So currently, the Stevens Estate collections are at 14.45%, which is down about 19% compared to the same time last year. The expenditures, including encumbrances, so what encumbrance, if you don't know, is when we have a contracted amount, we mark it in our systems as being spent, so we don't overspend, are running at 22.29% of the budget. The Stevens Estate revenues have obviously been negatively impacted by COVID-19 in both fiscal year 20 and 21 due to the government's executive orders, which closed the facility entirely for a long period of time and has continued to restrict the capacity of the events now. In fiscal year 20, there was legislation that allowed for revenue deficits in enterprise funds to be amortized over three years. So basically, if there was a deficit, they allowed you to carry that deficit and then spread it out almost like a debt payment. There has been no legislation like that passed for fiscal year 21 yet. Last year, we did carry approximately $120,000 deficit, which we use retained earnings to close at the end of the year. As you know, at town meeting, we appropriated $360,000 in a budget for the Stevens Estate. Currently, we have $51,798, $96 in revenue. We had forecasted that due to COVID restraints and closures, we actually would only expand about $212,000 this year, rather than the full $360,000. Director Savage had submitted a comprehensive financing plan for that amount to the Department of Revenue that included revenue received, revenue expected to be received, retained earnings, as well as a plan where we would reappropriate capital funds that had been appropriated at past town meetings for the Stevens Estate if needed. Unfortunately, the DOR rejected that plan. So at the meeting with DOR, they explained the following, that due to the deficit being shown so early in the year, we would not be able to use unappropriated retained earnings to offset the deficit. So the difference this year is that we're so early in the year, we haven't set the tactic yet, and we're already showing this deficit. Last year, we were tracking more in line where we should be for spending and expenditures. The deficit really didn't become apparent until March, when we had to close down. We were thinking we'd have a small deficit, but nothing like what ended up happening, obviously. And so they've said that they will not allow us to use retained earnings as a revenue source to offset. They additionally ruled that the town will no longer be able to use deposits collected until the year in which the event is held. And so I go through in my memo, and I kind of try to explain how it's worked in the past. And from my conversations with Director Savage, it's worked this way for the last 19 years. The enterprise fund operated, so the deposit was credited in the fiscal year which it was received. So the, for instance, that I use is that you have the Smith wedding scheduled for July 1st, 2021. Like most people, they book their wedding on July 1st, 2020, right? And we collect a $5,000 deposit at that point. Historically, that money would have been used for fiscal year 20. They pay the remaining $5,000 on July 1st, 2021. That $5,000 will be used for fiscal year 21. We always had done it that way for a few reasons. We had a contract, so we knew that we weren't going to be giving the deposits back. They were non-refundable deposits, one. And two, there are costs that go along with planning for an event, right? All the costs for the event don't happen the day of the event. They happen in the time leading up to the event. Unfortunately, they will not let us use those funds any longer. What they've said we need to do is place those funds into a deposit account and hold on to them until the following fiscal year when the event occurs. So very unusual. We don't typically take prepayments in, or money in, in advance, and hold on to it in the town, right? Typically, what we learn is that if revenue comes in, and it disappears at the end of the fiscal year, right? So this is a pretty significant change to what we're used to doing for operations. The bigger problem with that is, is that we now have a gap year, where we do not have the deposits as a revenue source. Our fiscal year 20 deposits have already been used for fiscal year 20. And now we're in fiscal year 21, and the deposits for the events that are happening in fiscal year 22 are not available to us either, right? And so we have this one year with this change that's creating a gap. And so that's kind of making the problem twice as burdensome as. So DOR made three recommendations for options that we'll run through with you. The first one is that the town could opt to have a special town meeting to vote to balance the budget of the Osgood Hill Enterprise Fund by either appropriating retained earnings, reducing the budget, or both. So basically, we could go to town meeting, and we could say, we are recanting on our old budget request. We are only going to request $212,000, and we're going to use retained earnings to fund that. It's not a great option, because we don't have time to call a special town meeting, and it's COVID. So it would be very difficult to have one additionally. And we certainly don't have time to call a special town meeting before we need to set the tax rate. Our second option is to place the $300,000 shortfall on the tax levy. That's also not a great option for us. It's really not viable. We only have about $120,000 in levy capacity, which means that we can't fit $300,000 into our budget. Further, they should place the deficit on the taxpayers and increase the average tax bill by approximately $30. We also wouldn't be able to eventually reimburse ourselves. So when we get to option three, we'll talk a little bit about how we're going to pay ourselves back. In option two, there isn't an option to pay ourselves back. Our third option is to initiate a stabilization transfer. So under Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, there was a local option for this time period only due to COVID that allows the Board of Selectmen to appropriate funds from a stabilization account. As you know, we typically do that at town meeting. It's still a two-thirds vote. We can only do things we typically would do at town meeting. So we can make stabilization transfers to fund things. We couldn't decide we want to change the use of stabilization account. We couldn't decide we wanted to disband the stabilization account, but we're allowed to make transfers. And what we're suggesting is that we would transfer the $300,000. We would vote to transfer $300,000. We wouldn't transfer it right away. We leave it in the stabilization account. We wouldn't make the transfer until the end of the year, when we actually know what we need, because we do not anticipate that it's $300,000. We anticipate it's less. And then we would place an article on town meeting, likely within a special, within the annual, so that we could replenish the stabilization account using retained earnings. So basically, we would pay ourselves back. As part of that, we would have to really buckle down, and we already have. So we had to doubly buckle down on the spending in that budget in order to be able to make ourselves completely whole, right? And we already had spending freezes on. So it's more likely than not that we'd have to take more intrusive and dramatic action. If we do nothing, then the Department of Revenue would automatically force the deficit onto the recap. And it would automatically become in the red, and we automatically would go to the taxpayers. They also would likely automatically reduce some of our line items, probably our overlay, because they have to submit a balanced budget, just like we have to submit a balanced budget. The reason that they will not certify the recap, and I know I keep talking about certifying the tax rate, certifying the recap. The recap, basically what it is, is an accounting of everything we voted at town meeting. It shows all of our budget expenditures. And then it also shows how we plan to pay for it. And that has to be balanced in order for them to move forward with certifying the levy and allowing us to send out tax bills. So until it's balanced, we can't move forward. I explained to someone earlier today that it's kind of like going to the grocery store, and you have a $100 bill, and your groceries are $103, right? What do you give up, right? The grocery store is not going to let you leave until you get your bill to $100. And that's where we need to get. We need to get to that number. So we can't just reduce the budget now, because that requires town meeting. In the section about what does this mean for the Stevens Estate, it will likely mean that we'll have no retained earnings left at the end of the year. As you know, the retained earnings are, in essence, the free cash, right? It's the money that we've saved every year. It's the excess revenue surplus or any funds that we carried over from previous years. We wouldn't have any cash on hand, and we wouldn't have any cushion to fund any future revenue deficits. Additionally, in order to ensure that we will not spend more than is available to pay back the stabilization account, we would likely need to close the Stevens Estate in some capacity from after holidays until the first events are scheduled in April. And then, obviously, I just wanted to reiterate again that, you know, while I understand this is dire, we do have the working draft of the RFP done. It is being reviewed by members of the Launchroom Advisory Committee and the Chair of the Trustees, the Osgood Hill. And it's a really good and important thing for us to remember as we're moving forward to town meeting, because we are obviously in a very vulnerable place right now. And COVID has not helped that in any way, shape, or form. But this is an important time for us to take action. And then finally, I did attach to the memo, the copy of the email that we received from DOR. I did ask them to memorialize what they told us in writing. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the town manager. It's Rosemary. The thing that's just still so troubling to me is that this came on so suddenly without really a lot of time for us to make the change after 19 years of doing this. And then now forcing us to close the Stevens Estate for a period of time where it would be difficult to market it, of course, and maybe we can work on that. I just don't understand that the legislation, and correct me if I'm wrong, was not, is not, does not go into effect till next year, that why they are doing this to us at the very last minute with so few options, at the very least, it would have been great if they did this before town meeting and said, listen, there's some changes coming in where you're expecting you to work with them. I'm just shocked, especially, and maybe it's singing our woes, but again, the town of North Andover has been slammed the last two years. And for the most part, a function facility, because of the regulations, again, coming from the State House, it's just deeply troubling that this came at the last minute with very little time to respond, and our choices are extremely limited and frustrating. And the final thing, and if I'll go back and try to, is will this affect our bond rating in the future, you know, like for next year?
No, it will not affect our bond rating, because we will have a balanced budget in the end. At the end of the day, we'll have a balanced budget, and it won't reflect in our audit or anything like that. I think we all agree that the timing of this is really hard, right? Unfortunately, I think it's part of doing the recap and part of certifying the tax rate is that sometimes you do run into these types of issues where you don't have a balanced budget. I haven't had it happen before, but I know that Director Savage, even in our last budget presentation, her and I both talked about the inevitability of this maybe happening because of COVID and because of the revenues. So I don't, you know, I think we were all hopeful. And I think that Lynn made a really valiant effort to DOR in her efforts to show them our plan. And I actually was quite surprised that this is the direction that it took, because I don't think either one of us really expected that, because we do have cash on hand. But, you know, I don't see them wavering from this.
So, Melissa, maybe I missed it. Are you saying that option three from your memo, where we would transfer money from a stabilization fund, is that still on the table? Is that something we can still do and keep the estate open?
So that is the option that I am recommending. We could make a policy decision to do that, not pledge to transfer all of the money back to the Stevens Estate, to the stabilization fund, and stay open. I just don't think feasibly that we could continue to operate full-time staff there and be open during the months of January, February, and March, and bring in the amount of revenue that we need to be able to pay back the stabilization account. We have about $90,000 in retained earnings right now, right? We do have events booked for April and May. It's really hard to know, right? We have some books, some events booked for April and May that are 150 people. That if things are how they are right now, we wouldn't be able to have 100 people. But if we have a vaccine and events are back to normal, then we could have a normal spring. And it's a gamble.
So we don't have any events at all scheduled for January, February?
The last event is scheduled for January. I close the day after. So the last event is scheduled for January 10th.
So.
And it's scheduled for January 9th. And the first event is scheduled, so we have a bunch of events in spring that don't have dates yet, the first of which is marked in the booking report for April 1st.
So we're not really closing the venue. We're just, there aren't any events scheduled for that time. Therefore, we don't need the full-time staff at that time. We would retain the director, obviously, and continue to be able to work on booking future events. But we just wouldn't require staff there, because we wouldn't have any events that would necessitate that.
We're trying to creatively think of ways to keep the director on, whether it would be part-time there and perhaps part-time with vacancies we have at Town Hall, where she could help here, so that we don't have to furlough the employee. Because, one, obviously, we don't want to furlough our employees. We've been very proud that we've managed to not do that up till now. And, two, we're self-employed for unemployment, right? And self-employed for unemployment. And so it's a cost burden to us to do that as well. And I'd rather pay our employees to be here working and helping, right? Especially right now, where we need the assistance.
Well, it's a double burden, too, because if we don't have staff there to talk to potential bookings or to talk to folks who are interested in booking, then we're going to lose those as well. So we're going to have no answer on the phone for that time period.
Right. And even having bookings, in my opinion, makes it more attractive to somebody who might be bidding on the venue, right? So, you know, having that void is not ideal.
I agree. I mean, seriously, if you're looking to have a wedding somewhere, you're investing a significant amount of money. You don't want an event venue that is up and down on its availability or its opening. You want something that has a steady rate of open.
So we're going to be creative and figuring out how to keep this continue to be as operational as possible and successful as possible. It just will have to be done in a different way than it's being done right now in order to be able to pay back the stabilization account in some way, shape, or form.
Does it have to be paid back in the same fiscal year or the next fiscal year? Or can it be paid back over time?
Oh, that's a good question. So what they said back to us was that, please note at a future town meeting in this fiscal year, the town has the option of reversing and replacing. So it would have to be during this fiscal year.
Melissa, what did they describe as the urgency of doing it this year? Why, what was driving them to do this when it has worked in, you know, for the last 19 years, that it must be done, and it must be done now? And even though it potentially could hurt the estate, if we might have to close it or, you know, have part-time workers there, I'm just still deeply troubled by the urgency. And what's the detriment of not doing it? I mean, not to the town, but to the state. Why, if the legislation hasn't passed for this year, why are they doing it? It's just hard to comprehend.
I mean, I wish I had a better answer. You know, Lynn and I went back and forth with them quite a bit about kind of the whys. And the basic answer was that they could not allow us to, this early in the fiscal year, use our retained earnings to offset the budget, and that they will no longer allow us to use deposits. And there really wasn't any flexibility at all. And, you know, Lynn was with me. There really wasn't any flexibility at all in the conversation, unfortunately, other than to bring these three options forward.
And they can do this even though the legislation isn't in place for this change, correct? Or am I misunderstanding something?
There is no legislation. I mean, they get to make the decisions about how we, about whether and how we can fund things. So it's not legislatively based. There's no legislation that allows us to use retained earnings without an appropriation. There's been no changes to the law.
What, in that area? But isn't there forthcoming changes or something, if I understood the conversation?
In fiscal year 20, there was. So last year, they passed an emergency act that allowed enterprise funds to go into a deficit and amortize. That has not been passed for fiscal year 21. I did speak to some of our representatives today about whether or not there's anything pending, and they were going to bring it forward and see. But I haven't, there's been nothing yet. After this fiscal year.
I also called one of our people at the State House, and they were a little surprised, but we'll see. I mean, it's just frustrating. We've done it, and we've successfully done it, in good years and bad. And I'm disappointed at the unbelievable sense of urgency instead of working with the community, who's already been through a lot. It's troubling, to be frank. And I have no problem saying that to do the DOR. This is troubling that they would do this. We are a good community. We're in good shape. Bond ratings proved that and has proved that over the last several years. We have an award-winning finance director. I'm just still really troubled that they just... I mean, the town's not in trouble. I mean, financially, we're not in trouble. It's amazing that they've taken such a hard line on that.
Well, they have, and it's unfortunate. I concur with my, you know, other members here. But we need to choose a path on this. And I think what you've laid out here, Melissa, is really a, what I would consider a bridge loan to ourselves to make this work for this fiscal year. But it also, I think, engages us for a sequential discussion. Follow-up?
Sorry.
Stevens Estate and certainly all of this is into the RFP, because this is, you know, not an easy position for us to be in, to have to start making these choices. We're hopeful that there will be a change with vaccine and so forth. But I know you and Lynn are also looking at the, you know, the scenario, possibilities out there. And the one opportunity this presides for us is to look at, make us really kind of look at and consider those options a little more clear-eyed and maybe with new rules. make us really kind of look at and consider those options a little more clear-eyed and maybe with new rules, but at least, you know, at least it's clear what those rules are and may provide some, you know, a bright path for us to make some choices at the next town meeting. So at this point, what you've, what we have here is really three options, the two of which I don't want to speak for my fellow board members here, but at least the first two don't seem viable to me either. So I'm supportive of the concept that you and Lynn have put together to sort of bridge this for this year, but very cognizant of what that means for fiscal twenty twenty-two. I don't know if my fellow board members have other thoughts to that.
Mr. Chair, I what the Town Manager and Director Savage have laid out is, does seem like the best and most viable option. It's for us, if we need to take a vote on it tonight, that's what I would certainly suggest or even delay it, but I think at this point, I'm pretty much ready to vote on it with the caveat that if we could continue to work with the DOR on something a little bit more flexible or not as strident as this, then I would put that into the motion that unless some other arrangement can be made, that would be better. But we are on, we're on a timetable. You know, we don't have a lot of time.
Mr. Chair.
Like they've, they've made their, their point and then they're not going to bend too much. So I think what we have presented in front of us is our best options. And Laura, I apologize for jumping on you. I didn't realize that.
No, that's totally fine, Dick. No, I, the options obviously aren't not what we expected. And we need to move quickly and I appreciate the options that Madam Town Manager, you put ahead of us. I do, I was, it sounded to me that the change was last year, that they, it was emergency legislation that they allowed because of COVID. Is that right, that we could use the retained earnings, that that wasn't generally allowed?
So we do, we, if we run a deficit at the end of the fiscal year, it does typically go into the retained earnings. You know, we don't typically go into our recap, though, knowing we're going to have a deficit, right? That's something that would come up later, you know, and it would not typically be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars like it was last year, right? It typically would be more like, you know, five grand or four grand. I think in fiscal year nineteen, it was twenty, nineteen thousand, Lynn, or sixteen thousand. So it typically would be a smaller round. You know, that we would use, certainly not the amounts that we're talking about now, although this certainly is not normal times either. So, yeah, but typically, we, you know, you go into your, you go into your recap with the balanced budget.
Right. And do we have concerns about going to town meeting, refunding the stabilization fund? Stevens Estate doesn't have any retained earnings and then continuing on to operate that through?
I do have concerns about that. I have concerns about creating next year's budget, especially if we are still are where we are now and how we go about creating that, right? And not ending up in the situation we're in today. No, we trimmed this budget pretty significantly this year, moving the routine, moving all of our indirect costs over to the general fund budget for the first time, about eighty-five thousand dollars of them. So, you know, we already had made trims. I don't know how much more we can trim and continue to operate. And that's, that's a scary thing to have to say, right? So I have concerns about all of it at this point, unfortunately.
And just to follow up on that, as far as that, I know you're working on the RFP. What is your projected timeline on that? Like getting it out there, you know, moving for, I mean, we're, we're coming up on May to town meeting and it would be a quick turnaround.
The draft is with the members of the, of the committee right now. I sent to them on Monday. I anticipate that they would look at it for two weeks. I did say I put it on your agenda, which I will do as well, but we can advertise it in advance of that so that people know it's going to be available. We will definitely have a warrant article on, right, to be ready for a May town meeting. And then the hope is that people bid, right? And we go through our evaluation process. So, you know, I think we could have it on the street within the month, so.
No, that's great. Yeah, I think that this just brings to light some of the issues that we've and I don't mean to, I love the Stevens Estate just as much as everybody. I just, this is just bringing to light some of the issues and unfortunately, it's been compounded with COVID and everything that's happening right now. So, but again, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. And we don't have it on the agenda to vote tonight because I really wanted all of you to have the opportunity to really absorb it. It's a lot to ask, to ask the Board of Selectmen to make stabilization transfer outside of town meeting. It's unusual and I think that, you know, having the memo out there for a few days, allowing the public to absorb this is going to be important. So we had planned to call a meeting for Monday just to have this vote, nothing else. I don't know if there's a time that works better for people than seven, if people want to meet earlier. I know Phil's not here, so maybe we can just send an email out and ask everyone what the best time is, but it would just be this one, this one item.
Okay. I appreciate that approach. I do think a couple of days to digest and again, let the community understand this because there's been a lot of information this past six months, past year about the Stevens Estate and about funding. So I appreciate the repose. The rest of the rest of the board feel the same way. Just get together on Monday.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's fine with me, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lynn or Melissa on this before we adjourn?
I would say we receive a lot of questions today from residents. Lynn and I have been answering for members of the trustees and members of the Launchroom Advisory Committee. So, you know, happy to share information if people have questions or concerns.
And let's put the exclamation point on the meeting.
All right. With that, again, thank you, everybody, for gathering on this Wednesday. I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Rosemary. Roll vote?
Laura Bates, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye. Have a good evening and we will see you Monday. Planning right now, seven o'clock. We will have confirmation of that. Bye. Take care, everybody.